Can I call the meeting to order?
Okay. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we'd start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson.
Present.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Chair Silberman.
Present.
Now it's time for public comment. This portion of public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here to address a matter that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's move on to the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes? Does anyone want to propose any changes?
I'd like to add, at the end of planning commission comments and reports, so at the end of that sentence, it should read, "Would like to see them replaced with trees that will grow taller."
Where are you?
The last sentence. So Commissioner Marsters informs staff that the trees along Industrial Road across from Pamp looked dead and wants to know the status of these trees and would like to see them replaced with trees that will grow taller.
Anyone else have any changes or additions to the minutes?
I didn't have any.
I'd observe that it looks like that the dates on page four are wrong. It does, it seems like, it says Wheeler Plaza Project would be heard by the Planning Commission on May 14th. I think that, was that April 14th?
That's correct.
And then it says the May 20th meeting is canceled. I think that was the April 20th meeting.
That is also correct.
And I think the next dates are correct. So I would suggest those changes and otherwise entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Mr. Marsters.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, but I think it's four, one, or four with one abstention. Moving on to new business. So we are going to start with a, an item considering reconsideration of the Planning Commission's condition of approval to require additional signage to display San Carlos Center on two, I don't know why I'm reading this. Item 6A, is there a presentation?
Yes, there is. There we go. Thank you for your patience. My name is Lisa Porres, Principal Planner for the City of San Carlos, and I will be presenting this item to the commission tonight. As noted by the chair, the item before the Planning Commission is to reconsider the Planning Commission's condition of approval to require San Carlos Center signage on the two building-mounted signs that are oriented towards Highway 1, 101, excuse me, at 301 Industrial Road, otherwise known as the Pamp Medical Facility. Just a little bit of background, on April 6th, the Planning Commission granted design review approval to amend the Palo Alto Medical Foundation sign program to add an additional wall-mounted sign facing Highway 101. During that hearing, there was a condition added to the approval to require San Carlos Center on two freeway-oriented signs. There is a pre-existing sign that's oriented to the freeway, and the commission also requested that the San Carlos Center be added to the new freeway-oriented sign. The applicant was not present that evening, and the applicant is requesting the Planning Commission's reconsideration of the condition. As provided in your packet, the condition of approval reads as follows, "The two building-mounted wall signs facing Highway 101 shall include additional signage to state San Carlos Center to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Division and incorporated into the revised comprehensive signage program," which itself is condition number three. "The overall square footage of 934.3 may be increased to accommodate this additional signage." And just to go back, and just for a brief moment, I believe there were several commissioners that were not here that evening. The additional wall sign is shown on this map in red, and the two pre-existing wall signs are shown with the dark black lines. And the next few slides are just some renderings to show how the new, or third wall sign would appear on the north elevation. As seen from Highway 101, the reasons that, and the applicant is here this evening, they provided several reasons for the Planning Commission's reconsideration, which I'm sure they'll get into in more detail than I, but just to summarize, they have concerns about branding consistency, they're concerned about distractions with the idea that less signage would be better overall, that San Carlos Center is already provided on a monument sign off of Industrial, that adding additional signage to the existing sign will disrupt it, it will need to be relocated, they'll have to rework electrical and possibly patch some holes, that the additional signage would be inconsistent with the other signs already provided on the facility, and they believe that Pamp is a well-known brand name and there should be no confusion. Should the Planning Commission wish to make a motion, this is the motion that they would make, with adjustments made to the code compliance certificate as the Planning Commission desires. I'm available for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for staff right now? Does the applicant want to speak or make a presentation? If you'd please come up to the podium.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is David Jury. I'm Vice President, Support Services for Palo Alto Medical Foundation. We do have, you know, I would not call it an objection, but some angst about this issue. We would appreciate your support in reconsideration. The issues to us are several. We have an established company logo, which is the sign that we are presenting on the building face, and the company logo does not include things like Palo Alto Center, Mountain View Center, San Carlos Center. Those have been considered and included in all of those stated cases where we have large clinic settings. We would much prefer not to paint our logo by moving other issues onto that building frontage. We also just looked at pricing the change for the existing sign, and it's about $80,000. So it's not, not a small issue to us. We would just like to be consistent. We, this sign, the signage program would be consistent with all of our clinics throughout the area. We really don't believe that adding San Carlos Center, if you saw the visuals earlier, would be very visible at all from the freeway as you're going by at the speed that you're going to be driving by. So we would appreciate your consideration, your reconsideration, and I thank you for listening to me.
So how much of your angst relates to the changing of the existing sign versus adding San Carlos Center to the new sign?
Well, we believe that all of the signs should be consistent. So it really is a question of all or none.
So basically, you're saying that if we were to condition the new sign on it saying San Carlos Center, you would spend the $80,000 and change the existing sign as well, even if we didn't require it?
I think that if you went ahead and made the condition that it say San Carlos Center, we would withdraw our need for that other sign.
Can you clarify what, what the $80,000 is for? Is it just to add San Carlos Center, or is it for the entirety of the sign?
You can't just add San Carlos Center to the sign, it sets it all in balance.
Right, but this is a brand-new sign, right?
No, this is the second sign.
Oh, okay.
You have to remove the sign, change the electrical connection, move the sign, the existing sign up so that there's room for the San Carlos Center to be underneath it.
And then, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Do we have anyone here who wishes to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, does anyone have any additional questions for staff?
I guess maybe some clarification on, I was under the impression when we had voted on this that we would eventually like to have San Carlos Center on all three signs, and maybe that's more of a question for the other commissioners that was here during, during the discussion. Is that how you remember it, Scott?
I, I think so.
Okay.
And so I was part of, I was on EDAC when this came through as an EIR, and I was on the Planning Commission when this was first approved. And one of the things that sort of surprised me about the sign was that the existing sign is not, is not, is not going to stay there. Once the hospital is built, that sign will actually be out much, much closer to the freeway on the stair tower of the, the hospital. And so I wouldn't have an objection to not having that sign changed until it's out along the freeway. That would save the $80,000. But I do like the idea of having the San Carlos Center on the sign.
And just for some, some background, see what happens when you two aren't here. It was actually a suggestion by a member of the public, but it was, it was a good suggestion, something that was in keeping with, I think, previous conversations about when Pamp was coming to the city. And as the applicant had said, it is already on Industrial, so I'm not really understanding the branding concern. I understand the cost concern, and I also understand the sizing concern from the freeway, but the branding concern doesn't, doesn't seem to me as strong of an argument. So I guess that's where I would put it.
So, I'm sorry, sir, do you mind coming back up for a second? I don't, I don't mean to make you be a jack-in-the-box, but I was curious whether you had a response to Mr. Marsters' comment about the, the current sign only going to be in place until the hospital opens, and then it was going to change anyway? Is that accurate?
When and if the hospital is built, there is no approval for us to build the hospital at this point. There's no funding for it.
Okay.
So this is not a when, it's a if and when. Yes, there would be new signage placed on the building.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So any discussion among the commission?
Yeah, yeah. Unlike Chair Harper-Peterson, I, I do appreciate they want to keep the brand consistent. And I think that, you know, if we want businesses to be here, that we need to make it friendly for businesses to be here. And so I, I, when this came through, I was, I was fine with the motion to have it added, but considering their, the cost and their concern about brand, I'm not as, as firm on, I actually would, I actually think having those, that, all that on that small space is sort of dilutes the message to begin with. So I would be in favor of allowing them to proceed just with the way that they, they came with it originally.
Do you have any comments?
Well, we did miss a reading, so it, so it was brought up by a member of the public.
Indeed.
And the, besides the fact that, I think I read in the minutes that it was possible confusion that you weren't in San Carlos, is that how it was kind of worded, or?
You might have a better recollection of that, Scott, than I did. I think it was just more of a branding for our city also, if there's going to be a new sign. I don't think people are necessarily confused that they're, oh my gosh, we're in Palo Alto, though you never know. But I think that, forgive me, if there was going to be a big freeway-oriented sign, something that said San Carlos would be, would be an advantage, and I think it was well said by the member of the public.
There really isn't much out along the freeway that delineates San Carlos from any of the other towns as you're heading south. And so the idea was that this would be one way of presenting that this area here is San Carlos.
I mean, I don't really feel strongly about this issue. I'm also not, you know, terribly, you know, I think the argument made in the, in the report that we approved the sign as it exists right now compels me to, to not want to force them to change an existing sign at cost to them. But I mean, I certainly wouldn't, I have no heartache about forcing them to put San Carlos on a new sign, and on any, on any new sign that they put up, if that's what the majority of the commission wants to do.
And I think the thing that, you know, there's, there's a couple of things from this that I, I, I would say, yes, I agree with you. At the cost of $80,000, I wouldn't, I agree with you that we shouldn't force them to put it on the existing sign that's there. But the new sign, I think, is a very different case, where there is the San Carlos Center on the monument sign already. So they've sort of shown that it's not inconceivable for them to add San Carlos Center to their signage. And I think down the road, they, when that sign is moved to where the hospital, where the hospital stairway is, that there's no reason that that sign couldn't be updated and have San Carlos Center on it.
Okay. So I think probably the easiest thing to do would be to have someone, if someone wanted to vote for the existing motion to completely reconsider, they can make that motion, and we can see whether there are three votes to basically just approve what was originally proposed. And if there isn't three votes, then I guess we can figure out what to do after that. So does anyone want to, if, if anyone wants to totally reconsider the prior requirement that the signs include San Carlos Center, I would suggest they make the motion that is on the screen.
So this motion would be for us to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
I'm going to make that motion, even though it might not pass, but I'm going to make the motion that the Planning Commission approve the request of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation for design review approval to amend approved sign program for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation to allow an additional internally illuminated building-mounted sign on the north elevation of the medical office building for a total square footage of 934.3 square feet at 301 Industrial Road. San Carlos subject to these conditions as set out in the code compliance certificate.
I'm going to second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So that motion does not carry, so it sounds like there may be support either for a motion to do nothing, no motion or a motion to amend, to basically not require the existing sign to, to be changed.
Since we have not closed the public hearing, can we bring the gentleman back up?
I don't think this is a public hearing matter, but you, so definitely you can.
Okay. So if the choice is no sign or one sign with San Carlos Center, are you essentially saying that you're not going to put a sign up?
This is probably my reaction.
Okay.
We have, in the past, had a very, very good relationship with the City of San Carlos. We wanted to come here because we love this city. This is the first time we've had loggerheads with the city, and I would hesitate to say absolutely positively no. But my feeling is that the organization is, is very serious about our logo up high on the buildings and preserving that. It is not required to our knowledge by anybody else in the City of San Carlos to have such signage. We don't see a precedent. We have will willingly agreed to the signing, signing on the monument sign as we have in other communities, and just feel that this is a little heavy-handed.
So I'm sorry, maybe I misread the, the report. I was under the impression that you have freeway signs on other buildings that have geographical markers on them. Is that not the case?
That is not the case. We have, we have monument signs in front of buildings, signs this high, on the ground.
So, I'm sorry, keep going, I keep interrupting.
Identify Mountain View Center and Sunnyvale Center. We do not have any parapet signage that identifies a, a community location.
So, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor this, but I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. There is no highway-visible sign on any Palo Alto Medical Foundation building anywhere that has a geographic marker?
Not to our knowledge, and I think the three of us are the, you know, we're it.
Yeah, because there's some confusion, because that's one of the, the things that I saw was that, and I can't remember where it was, but it's.
One under background?
One under. Has a lot of identifiers on the building when the local municipalities have required it. So that suggested to me that in other locations, you have those types of signs where municipalities have required it.
We have monument signs, not on the building, and we have no other buildings with freeway visibility.
Sorry, it says on the building in the report?
Yeah.
But that, that's not the case.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here to object to this when you met, and I apologize for that. I was sort of a guest at Stanford Hospital. It's a testament to the health care that you're going to be receiving here. I went to Art Urgent Care, I went to Stanford, I now have a new pacemaker, and I'm back on the job. It's good, what you're getting is good regardless of the signage.
So, actually, I mean, can I ask staff, do you, you see where we're reading, and I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but?
Yes, and I, I don't want to put anyone else on the spot, but the language provided that goes at the bottom of page one to two, that's numbered one through five, was provided by Stella, I can't pronounce her last name, C. So I copied this verbatim.
Okay, is, is that Stella in the, in the audience?
Here.
And I, you know, I hate to put Stella, it just, we rely on these reports, and so frankly, it doesn't seem that out of ordinary to ask people to do what they've done before. So can you help us understand where that language came from?
Yes, that's from our Sutter Corporate Office in Sacramento. As part of our branding efforts, I went to them to say, to ask them if there were any requirements from a branding point of view, and they did say, if a local municipality does require it as a requirement, they, we have accommodations for it. But for Pamp, locally in the Bay Area, they have not done that and not in a freeway, there are, I think, the San Carlos building is the only freeway-oriented building that they, that Pamp has in this, in their system. But, oh, with Dublin, too, but.
But for Sutter, they have.
For Sutter and the Sacramento area or?
Right.
Other areas.
Okay.
So that's where the confusion is.
So that seems, okay.
It's the confusion between Sutter parent company and, and Pamp. Can I ask one more question? If the hospital is built, because you said if, and the sign goes out along the freeway, is there a need for the sign, the second sign that you have in play, that you're asking for right now?
Wouldn't the hospital block that sign?
Would the hospital, that's what I'm asking.
I, I believe.
The hospital will obviously block the first sign that you have up right now, but would it block the second sign?
No.
It wouldn't block that second sign, that, this requested third sign.
It would not block it.
It would not block it.
Okay, I think you can sit down again. I can't promise I'm not going to make you get up again, but, well, I don't know where we are exactly.
I mean.
I'm reconsidering it, partly because it, it isn't something that Pamp has done. It is something that Sutter, the parent company, has done. And, you know, part of this was the fact that, you know, number one, they do say they allow it where local municipalities have required it. But Pamp doesn't necessarily follow that, so I'm waffling.
I just, I feel like if Sutter does. I just, I feel like if Sutter does, I don't really see the big difference between Sutter allowing for it and Pampf allowing for it. And maybe that's just my initial kind of gut reaction to it, but...
Toyota and Infiniti are the same company and there's different standards.
Right. No, I mean, I understand companies have subsidiaries and have different branding, I just don't, but I'm talking about the actual corporate allowances being, being made to, to identify local municipalities that I don't see as a, I don't see that as a big, a big departure from, from their branding, I don't. But if I'm the only one, then I'm the only one, and that's fine. Absolutely fine.
I don't think you're the only one. And actually, I mean, I'm kind of enjoying this too much because I think there's some irony here in that I think the Sutter Health brand is a much stronger brand than the Palo Alto Medical Foundation brand. And I kind of wonder if in some ways that's motivating the resistance to including San Carlos Center. And on the flip side, I do think that it's not necessarily a huge probability that folks are going to see Palo Alto Medical Foundation and think that they're in Palo Alto, but I actually think there is some possibility that that would happen. You know, folks who are coming from the airport, you know, who don't know the Bay Area, who are driving by, you know, on their way to Palo Alto, on their way to San Jose, you know, I thought for quite some time that Palo Alto Medical Foundation was only in Palo Alto. So, you know, I'm not going to hijack this and, you know, I think, you know, Scott, you need to make up your mind because I could easily go either way. I wasn't here for the original presentation. And I'm going to, I'm going to go with, with you and Angela if you want to stick with your guns, but otherwise, I think we, I'll remake the original motion.
I mean, I think I should make it clear, I, I would only want them to do this for new signs, too, and then, you know, updates as things would go forward with cost, but I'm not saying they have to remake every sign, but they could.
And, and here's what I'm balancing, okay? If they are required to do it for the new sign, then they probably won't put that new sign in, okay? And they may, they may not. But here's sort of the thinking. If they decide not to put it in, then we're still left with that one sign that's going to be moved out if and when the hospital, realistically, it probably will be built, out along the freeway. And so do we want that sign to say San Carlos Center? And...
I don't know where you're going, Scott.
I'm not sure I go...
Here, I'm going to, you know, as, you know, as interesting as this conversation has been, unless you want to make a new motion, I'm going to go ahead and remake the original motion. So I'm going to give you another minute or two to, to decide, and then I think we're going to have to fish or cut bait.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point out, yeah, in the minutes, it did say the public, under public comments, that the Vanessa Navala asked why the signage cannot include the words San Carlos Center, because if you're not from the area, you would know you're in San Carlos. Again, I don't think it's the responsibility of, of the hospital to identify that you're in San Carlos. And I think that, that's why I was asking about, how did this come up? And that's how it's reading in the minutes. It sounded like it was an identifier just in case you didn't know you were in San Carlos. And that, again, I don't think that's the responsibility of the hospital, really.
Well, it'd be the hospital that was creating the confusion in the first place, but anyway...
Because they have a giant sign that says Palo Alto on it. It's not just saying lumber liquidator or something else. I mean, you know, with all due respect, it has the name of another city right on it. And I think that's why, that's why there's a special onus on this particular sign. Plus, they have prime freeway-fronted real estate.
And I was, when I was driving by, and I, and I was almost past it before I realized what it was. And I live here, so I think, I think it's important for them to be able to identify their brand as, as the medical foundation more so than San Carlos. I think having that sign there, even if it's without the San Carlos, is more important than not having a sign. Just my two cents.
I would agree. I've made up my mind.
All right. I move that the planning commission approve the request of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation for design review approval to amend the approved sign program for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation to allow an additional internally illuminated building mounted sign on the north elevation of the medical office building for a total square footage of 940, 934.3 square feet at 301 Industrial Road, San Carlos, subject to the conditions as set out in the code compliance certificate.
I'll second that.
Wait, wait, hold on. What, what, I want to make sure I'm clear on what this motion is. Is this, because I want to make sure I vote the right thing, right?
I think it's, it's a motion to put a Palo Alto Medical Foundation sign on your house, I mean, it's the, it's the original request of the applicant.
Okay. So with, not with the, our suggested modifications, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And I believe there was a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four, one, with a, with Angela as the no.
That was an interesting one.
Yeah, it sure was. All right.
You don't have to stay. I know you guys want to go.
Actually, no, you need to come back. I'm just kidding. One more question.
Do we ever close the public hearing?
There's no public hearing. Yeah. So next is 6B. I'm going to call it the Honda dealership.
Thank you. Good evening. The item before you is the design review for the construction of a new automobile and sales and repair facility at 775 Industrial Road for Honda. For some background, as you recall, in December of 2013, the planning commission approved an initial study mitigative negative declaration, the design review, grading and dirt haul, a variance, as well as a conditional use permit. Those entitlements were extended by the zoning administrator in January of this year, and the effective date of the entitlements were extended through December 16th, 2017. The applicant has submitted a revised building design concept to accommodate future remediation efforts at the site due to the contamination. The revised design requires planning commission review due to condition one of the design review certificate, which requires any substantive changes shall be reviewed by the planning commission. The item before the commission is limited to the design review for the building modification only, and all the other entitlements that I mentioned are still in effect and are not open for review this evening. This is the site plan that was approved by the planning commission. The portion to the rear, Highway 101 is at the, the top of the screen, Industrial Road is at the bottom of the screen, and this is a flag lot that takes access off Industrial Road, and you'll see that on the, on the right-hand side. So the site plan had the, the service facility at the rear, and that's in that yellow shaded area, the showroom office area in the front, in the pink shaded area. And then on the left side is the customer parking, and then green has the landscaping throughout the perimeter of the site and within the parking area. The revised site plan has the building in a more square configuration, somewhat to the center of the site, continues to have access, the same driveway, and then the ramp configuration changes. Excuse me, as you would see in your packet, the ground floor now provides customer as well as sales vehicle parking. And the first floor of the building accommodates the showroom as well as the service center and some office space. And then the upper level, or the third floor of the building, has some additional offices as well as parts storage. And just so you can see, compare the elevations, this is not an exact-to-scale, but it's a pretty good graphic representation. So on top is the approved elevation, and below would be the proposed elevation. So this is the elevation that would front Industrial Road. So as you come in off the driveway, this would be the first elevation that you see. And you see there's the new ramp configuration to get the access to the showroom as well as access to the service facility. And then this is the elevation that faces Highway 101. Previously, there was roof-level parking, and the gray shaded areas was kind of some openings that you could see the vehicles displayed at that roof level. Now what we have is a secondary ramp to access that service facility. And then there's a rear deck so that they can display the vehicles from facing 101 as well as large glass, and then you can see a bit of the tower element on that elevation. This would be their main entrance elevation, and that's facing the left-side property or what we would consider to be the north side if, if 101 was truly running north and south. And so you see the change, the, the main entrance is really facing that elevation with this tower, decorative tower element, and then the, the ramps that you see on the right side, that's accessing the showroom as well as the parts facility and the service facility. And then this is just the other side elevation. The applicant is here this evening to answer any of your questions as well as the project architect. The project does continue to comply with all of the municipal code standards, the height. It's within the height limit. The project exceeds the setbacks. It also exceeds parking as well as additional landscaping. And I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Can you pull up the front, what's facing Industrial again? I want to make sure I understand the change. So it's, it's not, it's, I'm trying to make sure, I mean, is it, is it, am I seeing that it is not as wide as it was?
It's not quite as wide. And, and again, this is not an exact-to-scale comparison. So it's a, more of a graphic representation, but I can have the applicant maybe give you a little more details on the dimensions. Okay. That's all for now, thanks.
Does anyone else have questions for staff at this time? Does the applicant want to come up? I'm sensing from body language that you don't really have a presentation, which is totally okay, but I didn't want to take away your opportunity to give a presentation if you really wanted to.
No, thank you. We're, we're trying to find a way to accomplish this project while allowing the remediation to continue.
Okay. So you had a question for them, Ms. Bergman?
Well, I'm, well, you just mentioned that you wanted to do it to allow the remediation to continue. I mean, the, the front facade's changed drastically, and just my personal opinion, it doesn't look as classy as it did from the first version, especially like with the, the waved awning and the Honda standing out. I mean, I think that's a lot more aesthetically pleasing, and I was just wondering what the reason for that was.
Can we actually have staff go to the next elevation set? One more.
Okay. So the proposed elevation here that you're seeing beneath the originally approved elevation, so if you were southbound...
Right.
On the highway, or on the freeway, this is what you're now seeing. So what actually happened in sight as part of the mitigation to allow for monitoring of the wells, the building had to rotate on site. So now the main entry is actually facing southbound traffic, which could be, you know, it's also a benefit, it's just which way do you want to look at the building? If you're coming down Industrial, there's still the potential to see this on the southbound. It's also a potential to see it on the freeway. If you go back to the other elevation, one more. Okay. So now on this side, basically, what you have is, this is the service entry portion of the building.
So this is facing, this is facing Industrial?
This is facing Industrial, correct. So what you have here on to the left, underneath this, this San Carlos Service and Sales Center sign, you have a speed ramp that brings everybody up to the car drop-off. That's the service area, you drop the car off, and then you basically, there's a speed ramp facing you right in the middle of the building, which brings you back down to the ground level at the site there. And then to the far left is the, the service area. I mean, yeah, far right.
So there was, can you explain what was going, with the compliance, what you're, what...
So there's, there's wells on the, currently on site that need to be monitored as time goes on. I'm unaware of the actual timeline for monitoring of the wells, but the previous design did not allow for, for monitoring of these wells. There, there are a number that were within the footprint of the, the building pad. And so to allow this now, the building is actually raised up almost 11 feet, 10 foot six plus or minus, so that it's basically, where the parking was previously on top of the building, we just took it and shifted it underneath the building, so it's open air, and the building went up.
So it's 10 feet above the elevation right now?
Yes.
And then it's a 44-foot building on top of that?
No, it's, no, the, still, the, the total height is, the top of parapet's about 44 feet, so...
Ground level right now?
From ground level. So imagine if you had a cake, and your cake had three layers?
Yeah.
We just took the top layer, took the other two, lifted them up, and put that top layer at the bottom.
There was previously parking on the roof that was screened by a roof parapet.
Right.
So the height has increased, I think, just by a couple of feet.
I think it's like less than five feet.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's from the existing ground level, not from the 10 feet that you're raising, raising it up?
Not from the 10 feet, correct. Yeah.
I just want to make sure that, that you're not putting 10 feet of soil in there and then putting a 44-foot building on top of that.
Oh, gosh, no. Yeah.
In fact, this design change allows us to not have the requirement to bring in what was proposed and approved, about three foot on average of soil. That was a request we made because we wanted to bring it above the floodplain. Now my building is above the floodplain because it's raised up above parking.
Got it.
Will the lighting change?
So the, the lighting, the, the building lighting really hasn't changed. What was previously approved is, is still the, what's set forth here.
Still not going to spill over into...
Correct. All the, all the previous conditions are still being met with the site lighting and the building lighting.
And the same with noise?
Exactly. So all of this, really, all this is, is just the building had to be rotated, and the, the parking is now beneath, so it's more of a cosmetic and floor plan change than it is a full redesign of all the other conditions.
So I, I understand what you're doing. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a, I'm really conscious of people driving down Industrial and what they're seeing aesthetically, and, and I would, I would hesitate to make it a condition of approval, but I really like the top, how it has the, the waves. I mean, it's just a little bit more classy than just, I mean, that looks really, the one on the bottom looks really boring. And, and I really like our town to be aesthetically pleasing, and there's, I think you could do a little bit more on trying to articulate this to make it, make it look better to the public.
So I may both help and hurt this conversation. My recollection, when we, when we saw this before, was that this was so far setback that you really couldn't, you can't really even see it from Industrial. There's like something in front, and there are long driveways, and...
Yeah, there is, there's a, this building is setback, it's a full property plus, let's just call it an alley, behind the existing building out on Industrial, the existing building out on Industrial is probably 15 to 20 feet to the top of that parapet with buildings that, but more or less zero property line, they're right up against the, the sidewalk. So to be able to see this building at that flat elevation is a little deceptive because you're, you're not going to get that view. Something's always going to be in front of it.
So now I helped you.
Thank you.
Now I'm, now I'm going to hurt you, or maybe not. I'm looking, I'm looking at the, at the building as you're driving into San Carlos from Redwood City, and it looks like one gigantic massive wall with no nothing. I mean, there's a Honda sign, and I, you know, I like Honda signs, but other than that, it's, you know, it's, it looks like a giant wall with no depth, no anything. So I don't remember any discussion as to whether or not you would see that as you are driving on Industrial, and I would love if you could help me out because it's sort of not super attractive looking.
We didn't believe that you would see it.
Okay.
Adjacent to our property, there is a collection of warehouses that are quite tall, and they're out towards the freeway. There's multiple buildings there. And our building is whatever the fire lane is plus a, the channel for catching rainwater. We're pretty close together, their buildings and our proposed buildings. So we didn't believe that wall was visible much at all.
Okay. All right. Well, you answered my question.
And with that, we tried to draw more attention to what the face was along the freeway.
I'm sure that Scott's going to tell you, you need like 27 trees right there, so, you know, to, to cover it all up anyways, so we'll, we'll find out shortly.
28 trees.
Maybe 29 trees.
On my list.
Because the same thing's always on your list, there's always trees.
There's always trees, yes.
And in fact, I specifically remember, I think I have post-traumatic stress from the discussion of trees on this project back in December of 2013, and whether they could fit any more trees in the property and how many more trees they could fit on the property. So I very much look forward to the tree discussion. It's certain, it is certain to occur shortly.
But before that, can I just get, staff, would you concur that you wouldn't be able to see the, this elevation, the, what I'm calling the... to see the, this elevation, the, what I'm calling the Redwood City elevation, driving north on industrial?
Minimally from the freeway.
Okay. What about driving north on industrial?
Yeah.
Again, minimally, given the setback.
Okay. And given the other buildings in front of it? I'm trying to put it in my mind.
You're probably going to catch the top of the building,
Okay.
but not that entire face.
Okay.
And then to the landscape, and the project architect can probably talk about more, but there is some challenges with this site and getting all the stormwater treatment measures, and so we need to be careful that the tree planting is consistent with what you can put in a grassy swale.
Got it. Thank you.
So, is there any more questions of the applicant at this time?
So I want to go back to noise, because you've oriented the building, the front of the building differently, okay? Whereas before, the building was facing industrial road and facing a more industrial area. But now that you've shifted it to sort of face south, face north, okay? I just want to make, are there speakers? Do you, do you have outside speakers?
I remember that conversation too.
We talked about, it's, it's, it's on the conditions, actually, that they were going to work with staff on the speakers.
Okay. Because we hear, every once in a while
I think I brought it up, actually.
San Trans messes with their speakers at the train station, and it goes on for days until, you know, enough people call and scream at them to turn their speakers back down. So that's why it's so important, because it goes off at, you know, midnight when the train goes through.
I totally remember having the, we had conditions on this.
So I want to make sure that that's not happening here, and that the residents there aren't going to call, aren't going to start screaming because there's noise coming from your location late in the evening.
As a business operator, we think loudspeakers in that environment are a nuisance also.
Okay.
I think that was your answer last time, too.
Yeah, well.
That's suspicious. That's a different orientation.
I just want to make absolutely certain, because I, you know, I'm going to be the one who has to deal with it. Trees. Can we plant large trees to begin with? One of the ideas behind planting trees is the heat island effect. And I've actually just gone down recently to the Best Buy, what is it, San Carlos Marketplace to look, and it's been well over 10 years, and the trees, in a lot of cases, are not even 10 feet tall, and they're not really shading the, the parking lot. And so the intent of planting trees in a parking lot is to mitigate the heat island effect. So that doesn't mean six-foot-tall trees that never get much more. And I saw your trees. What I would like to ask is that you plant the largest version of those trees that you can, rather than planting the six-foot version, which is going to take 15 to 20 years to actually get to a point where it will actually do what it's supposed to be doing.
This is kind of, all right.
Well, it's twofold. You can talk about each other. All right, so for the heat island effect, yes, I understand. I understand the comment, and there, I think, previously, there was even some concern with the parking on the roof, which also adds to the heat island effect. Concrete or asphalt taking that heat, letting it go in the evening. So to that point, in reducing the heat island effect as itself, as a separate subject, not to trees, we're now looking at a reflective roof, right? Single ply TPO, probably white roof, highly reflective, not taking any heat on. The parking subsequently is then moved underneath the building, so further, no heat island for that parking area. We then run into the issue, okay, of what is remaining as asphalt that can perceive, has the perceived notion of it is going to create, you know, heat island effect, which it will. And the issue of the storm water portion here, which is, we need to provide a good enough flow to get into these stormwater retention areas, even the bio swales, to filter the water and get it out. So we need a sheet flow with that. You know, trees, you, we can plant, I guess what I'm getting at is, we can plant large trees now in their place. It's a, it becomes a cost issue more or less, if you're not asking for more trees.
I'm not asking for more trees. I'm just asking that you start off with larger trees rather than starting off with the tiny tree. Because you can put a really big tree in a 24-inch box.
Just want to make sure.
You can put a really small tree in a 24-inch box, and, you know, that's what I'm asking. I'm not asking for more trees this time. I'm asking for bigger trees.
So I'll make you happy. I'm going to tell you that he's not going to put one and a half gallon Japanese maples out there. But I guess this becomes, if you want to make
I'm not able to commit to a size of tree because I don't know what is available, and I don't know what the cost impact is. We like trees. We like the shade. Nobody wants to get in a hot car when you're out looking at a car. I just don't want to necessarily find myself this evening committing to some size that I find needs to be shipped in, you know, at some exorbitant cost.
You have to do 24-inch box trees. All I'm asking is that you, when you go out to look for the 24-inch box trees, if there's a six-inch tree, a six-foot tree, and a 12-foot tree, go for the 12-foot tree.
That makes perfect sense.
That's all I'm asking. Okay?
Yeah. I just didn't want to hear I got to go buy a 30-foot tree.
I'm not even going to make it as a condition. I'm just asking that, you know.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
That's one of the things. Okay.
Okay. So any additional questions for the applicant at this time?
Not at the moment.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have public comment. Mr. Vandalos?
I'm probably going to need more than two minutes.
So this is what I'm going to do.
On you.
No, I appreciate that. So just so that we were consistent, I'm going to, you know, set the timer at three minutes, which is what, what we do. And then if you want some more time, just ask for it, and I'm sure that a reasonable amount of time will be given to you.
I'm sure it will.
Okay, it's all right, we can share.
So just to start the discussion on a, not one I'm here to talk about, trees do capture carbon, by the way, and it's something that is important. I don't find that to be a flippant subject. Sorry, but I'm concerned about our planet. The discussion's been about building aesthetics and where it's at and all that kind of stuff, but the real issue at play with the site is that the site is a toxic dump. Toxics have been in play with the county on this site since the year 2000. It's been over 15 years. And that's been glossed over. And so I did some research, and I wanted to point out that Praxair is the company that's responsible for the cleanup under the authority of the San Mateo County Environmental Health District. And that cleanup hasn't been, hasn't been happening. If you take a look at the second page that I showed up, this is the GeoTracker site, which shows the, the water district. These are all the wells and excavation sites. There's something like 50 of them on this site. So you can't, you can't simply
This yours?
Yes, thank you. Lucky that you got the right one as I was talking about it, because I have like six or, I got a bunch of documents there, which I'm entering in the public record with the USB stick. I think it's very important that everyone on the Planning Commission realizes the severity of the issue. I don't have an issue with whether or not there's a dealership or a building there. What I have an issue is what we do before a building gets built. This is the key thing that I want to make sure people understand. So if we keep going on, you, there's a site history and background 2.2 in one of the pages. So liquid carbonic, this, this is a, is a very dirty industry. There are a lot of toxics here. I'm not going to bore you with reading through here. Is there, Mr. Silverman, is there something interesting or curious? So there were solid vapor samples collected in January and February 2010, volatile organic compounds, 23 were found, PCEs, TCEs, CIS, dichloroethylene, other types of dichloroethanes, vinyl chloride, freon, benzene, twalene, ethylbenzene, and xylene were detected. It's not a laughing matter. Groundwater monitoring wells were most recently sampled in May 2014. TCE and PCE have been consistently detected at most of the site wells. Other VOCs detected in the groundwater include CIS, blah, 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 blah. I'm not going to go through all of them. And they're in the aquifers as well in the groundwater. Kennedy Jenks' consultant had conclusions. Soil and groundwater, HVO, basically, they say that overall HVAC mass volatile organic compounds reduction was much less than would be expected. Soil and groundwater HVAC concentration data indicate that the injection program resulted in the redistribution of HVACs. Redistribution means they just got pushed around, nothing got cleaned up.
So how much more time would you like, Mr. Vandalos?
I'm going to go through a couple of these pages, and then I'll be done.
You want another two, three minutes, or?
Like that, yeah. I think it'll be pretty quick if you allow me to
I just want to get a sense of how long you think it's going to be.
I didn't time myself before I got here.
Okay, so it's
I would guess a couple of minutes, five minutes at most.
Five minutes is going to be enough?
I would certainly hope so.
Okay.
So, remedial, basically, they're saying the remedial technology didn't work, and the HVAC concentrations in groundwater did not decrease as had been anticipated. This is from a report in 2013. So the oxygen injection process did not, didn't have the benefit that they were hoping. If you go, keep, keep moving forward on the GeoTracker site, you can see the types of compounds in just a couple of the monitoring, well-monitoring sites, and there were something well over 50 of them. I'm not going to sit there and bore you with all the names, but this is, this is a toxic site. County of San Mateo Health System dated January 2015. It is noted the site had previously experienced issues with injecting large volumes of liquid. However, the work plan, oh, should this new type of injection prove to be as ineffective as the last, then other alternate remedial options should be explored immediately. What I'm concerned about is that we're not talking about cleaning up this site, which has not been cleaned up. That's the key issue here. Putting a new building, encapsulating, does not remediate the site. What you're doing is you're passing down toxins from one generation to the next. I would not want to be on a board where my children would question something like that. You can keep reading from the county. It doesn't appear that the, also, they have not been monitoring the site. They didn't do the monitoring in August 2014. They're asking the Praxair to resume the groundwater monitoring and continue until justification is provided to alter or terminate the monitoring. So you can see that the wells haven't always been able to be accessed, and that they're supposed to be maintained, and in order not allow contaminants to go to the surface. And when the water table rises, all of these compounds go, go into the polous water, into the creek, and the city gets fined. So what's important here is that the owners who are responsible for the toxins take the burden to clean up the mess, not the taxpayers of San Carlos, who end up getting fined because the city approves projects without the proper due diligence. There's another conclusion in the 2013 work plan. Remediation technologies employed to date have not yielded the inspected results during full-scale implementation and post-injection monitoring. So basically, what I'm asking for here is that we get full remediation of the site. And you can, I'm also entering into the public record the whole GeoTracker history of this site, which the Planning Commission members have. And the, some of the documents that I've included, I didn't include all of them, I just didn't have time, basically, are, are telling us that the site hasn't been cleaned up, and it would be immoral and unethical to build the building. And if the objection is it's going to take two years, the owners have had 15 years to clean up. So this is, Praxair is responsible, they need to do it, or whoever the new owner is of the site. As I mentioned, there's somewhere around 50 wells, which could be leaking. Let me see if there's anything else. There also was a chipmaker, Admiral Circuits, who was on the site before then, that's on the DTSC site. And basically, I'm saying this is a moral imperative to clean up the site so that future generations don't suffer from short-term and short-sighted decisions for business-friendly reasons. I want to inform this, this group that the city has been sued in the past for dumping excess amounts of toxins, and it's, it's, this is, this is something that all the monitoring agencies will be made aware of, and watchdog groups will be informed, and I really, really want, again, I don't care about what, necessarily what's built there, I just want to make sure that there's full remediation of the site, and I'm concerned that there has been no discussion of that regarding this. Thank you very much.
Of these, of this, I'm looking at this, basically, this readout of these values, and it's basically giving me numbers, but it's not showing me whether or not they're within acceptable limits or not. Can you explain that?
Well, the biochemist who I work with is not here. He's in Seattle. No, they're, they're not. This is why this is a toxic dump. So, and those are parts, parts per million, and that's, that's where it's, it's over. So it's, it's a site, it's a toxic cleanup site. So
Okay, thank you.
Staff, could maybe provide some more information for the commission?
You know, first, I would just to observe, and I'm not suggesting that any of my comments have any additional weight because of this, but I've, I represented the Division of Environmental Health in San Mateo County for 11 years. I recently stopped representing environmental health when I got promoted, but, you know, the responsibility for cleaning up this, ensuring cleanup of the site is the Division of Environmental Health and/or the State Water Board, not the city. And I would assume that the applicant got whatever approvals it needs or needed from the Division of Environmental Health, and if the Division of Environmental Health concluded that this site was unsafe in any way, it would not have approved building, this building where they're proposing building it. Is that basically what you were going to say?
Correct. I was going to clarify that the responsible authority is with the San Mateo County Department of Environmental Health. We've had numerous meetings with their staff to try to push, them to push, Praxair to clean up. It's in everybody's best interest to have that site cleaned up. The applicant has been pushing as well. So we do have all that information. The city attorney was also involved in those meetings. We've met with the current property owner and their attorney to try to get some additional leverage to get Praxair to clean up. And so with all that said, the applicant is trying to accommodate that cleanup in a manner that it will continue to happen. So raising the building allows the equipment to access, to allow the site to continue to be cleaned up, but we cannot prohibit the project from moving forward due to that contamination. Again, it's San Mateo County Department of Environmental Health. Do you have anything you want to add?
I would agree with staff's recommendation on the issue before the Planning Commission tonight is design review. The plans, according to staff report, they've made the findings, it is consistent with the requirements, our codes, and the general plan and zoning.
Okay, and you said that's why the, part of the elevation is there, to allow ongoing cleanup as it comes?
That's exactly right. That's exactly why it's been raised. They've done a lot of research to see if the equipment can fit under that, and that's exactly why the building is designed as such, to accommodate that continued cleanup effort.
Did the Division of Environmental Health indicate that building this building would in any way impact or delay the time period it would take to clean up the site?
No, they have not.
Anne?
The applicant had his hands up.
What's that?
The applicant had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you want to come to the microphone.
In fact, the county office told us that we could build the original building, and Praxair would have to work around us. But we saw the fight that was going to unfold. There are 23 active wells used for monitoring, and there are drilling techniques that they could have worked around a building that we originally proposed. We saw the obstacle, we came up with a design change that's going to allow them to do their ongoing work, and the county did issue a letter that said we could build even our original design plan on that site.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure, absolutely certain, that this site is going to be cleaned up.
Well, that's the responsibility of Praxair. We do not inherit that. We do not inherit that responsibility, nor does the current property owner own that responsibility. And Praxair has taken far too long.
And what is sort of the city's responsibility in this, shall we say? Is our policy to encourage cleanup of properties that are contaminated?
Absolutely, and that's why we've worked with the county and to try to, you know, push them to push Praxair. They have their own process they need to go through in order to do that.
Without, I guess I'm just curious, what, I mean, does everybody just sit around a table and encourage them to clean it up, or what is, I'm kind of curious, what, what the, I guess, what the stick is?
The Division of Environmental Health has, can do administrative fines if they don't clean it up?
Got it, thank you.
As a layman who had to get a lot of education on this over the past three years, we've been in contract on this property since 2012. Praxair has changed from Kennedy Jenks to a new firm that they've used throughout the country and other locations. It's called CBI, Chicago Bridge and Iron. And they have been working the past nine months on, actually, let me correct that. They worked for nine months in 2014 on bench testing different bacterias that would work on the matter. The matter is in the groundwater, 35 feet down. So their bench testing resulted in a bacteria that they are certain is going to work, but rather than attack the site, they wanted to do two locations of sampling, where they're injecting around two existing wells at different distances to watch that bacteria have an effect. In my education on this, there is nothing that's going to be done in any set amount of time. There's not a two-year timetable or a 10-year timetable. It's a process of if this material works, you continue to inject this material. As has been explained to me by the county, the levels continue to drop.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So essentially, encouraging them to clean it up involves administrative fines from the Department of Environmental.
Yeah, again, I don't want to get, I don't want to get too far afield. I frankly don't believe, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't frankly believe that the planning commission has the authority to deny design review based on environmental concerns that are regulated by a completely different agency.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay. Mr. Vandelos, you briefly wanted to make a statement?
Yes, I have a couple. In the city staff report, it says rather than wait several years for the completion of the remediation effort. So again, there's nothing against, the folks are trying to build something there, I don't have an issue there. Once you build something, you can't remediate the soil. What the gentleman was just discussing was another experimental approach by a remediation which is not something that works. It's experimental, and the only way to deal with this is to dig the soil up, take it out and dispose of it properly. That's the only way to do it. Once you build a building, you're basically condemning that soil to be contaminated for the life of that building and for future generations. The issue here really is a moral imperative to, we have an opportunity to clean this up. We can clean it up properly, and the folks can build their auto dealership. That would be great. But to sit there and deny, or to think that another experimental approach, when I've shown you that the previous experimental approaches have not worked, is flying in the face of the facts. And that is concerning to me.
Thank you, sir.
So I have two questions for staff here.
Okay.
The first would be, how is this different from, like, PAMF? Where PAMF actually had to dig up the soil and, and?
Scott, I mean, I'm sorry, staff can answer that, but it's, environmental health, the Division of Environmental Health decides what, in consultation with, you know, the responsible party, what kind of remediation has to occur. It depends on what's going to go there. So I would assume, but I could be wrong, that because PAMF is providing medical care to sick individuals, that the level of remediation is required. But we don't even, I'm sorry, I'm just, we don't know what the contamination was at PAMF, comparing it to the contamination here.
The importance is also the depth of the level of the contamination. This is not surface contamination. So a dig out, it's, you said it's at what elevation?
35 feet down.
Okay.
35 feet below grade is the contamination. So each site, like you said, is unique.
That's what I was trying to get at, is what is the difference between this and PAMF?
PAMF is the type of use one, and then the type and level of contamination.
Okay. And the second question would be, and it sounds like they're preparing for this potential option, if they need to at some point, get in underneath there and dig it out. That's what the 10 feet raising the building is for?
It really isn't. I mean, in our conversations with the county, there's not a feasible dig-out option. So it's really to continue to try to use different materials to remediate it, to break it down.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So I, you know, my only question was, is putting the new building on creating more of a health hazard? And it doesn't sound to me, from what I'm hearing, since it's so far down, that actually putting the building up there is creating more of a hazard, since the only remediation is microbial, looks so far possibly, if at all.
Great, and that's the determination of the Department of County Environmental Health, that it does not create more of a health hazard by doing this, correct?
Okay.
So, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Can I, so there's nothing above 35 feet below ground level? There's no contamination on the way down? This is all down at 35 feet?
It's okay, it's all right. I mean, if you really want to respond, you can.
I'm just asking the question.
I can understand the question, it's the same questions we asked. As you can imagine, we would, entering into a project like this.
I would imagine you would want the same type of thing, that's, you know.
So when the property changed hands from Praxair to Deerfield, who is the current owner, the agreement was they put aside over $2 million in escrow to handle the dig-out of where the old buildings used to be. They dug that down until it was clear, they disposed of the soil properly, and then filled back in.
Okay. So they've actually dug down to whatever depth, and so everything else is actually below that?
So then came the monitoring wells, and that's when they discovered at 35 feet.
Okay, so they've already done the dig-out. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So any more Planning Commission discussion of this item?
No.
Does anyone intend to propose any modifications? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission approve the design review for the revised building design concept for the development of the new automobile sales and service facility at 775 Industrial Road, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as condition in the design review certificate.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
No.
Oh. No. Okay. All right, motion passes 4-1 with Mr. Marsters as a no. Did you vote no last time? Remember?
No, I didn't. No.
So the next item on the agenda is 6C, the housing element. And, I mean, I know this is all laid out in the, in the staff report, but, I mean, this is, we approved, we reviewed the housing element, we sent it on to the city council with some changes. The city council made some changes, and now it's coming back to us. So really, it's just some fairly de minimis changes since the last time we saw it. So I actually asked staff to give a relatively truncated presentation on the subject.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Silverman and Commissioners. I will be making the presentation before you this evening. I'd also like to point out that our consultant from Barrett and Driscoll, Joshua Abrams, is here tonight, as well as Sam Hughes, who is managing the housing portion of our Economic David is correct. There were some previous actions made by the Planning Commission and City Council, most recently, and I've actually over-prepared, and that's only because we are on a state-mandated timeline to adopt our housing element. So if there's anything that may come up in the course of discussion, I am ready. But if we take a look at this slide here, what I really want to focus on tonight is the first bullet, to just, you know, go over the previous actions that were taken by the Planning Commission and City Council, and then move down to the bottom of the slide and focus on the comments that we got back from the state. And then, just briefly, to talk about the schedule and deadlines, and then we can look at the recommended motion that's before the commission this evening. As the chair mentioned, the last time this was before the Planning Commission, was earlier this year on January 5th, where the Planning Commission reviewed and provided comments on the preliminary draft housing element, which was dated December 8th, 2014. During that hearing, the Planning Commission provided staff with a handful of recommendations that the staff took forward to the city council one week thereafter when they reviewed it. The council also provided a set of comments to staff. Staff and the consultants then took that input, those contributions that were made by the Planning Commission and City Council, and incorporated them into a draft housing element dated January 13, 2015. This draft housing element is the draft that isn't included with your packet this evening. Thereafter, that was submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. The state provided us with an opportunity to talk verbally over some of their minor corrections and additions that they recommended. Staff took those comments and prepared modifications, and the modification is also included in your packet tonight. And the state has essentially approved the draft housing element and modifications by providing a preliminary letter that states that the draft plus modifications would comply with the state requirements. So moving on now, I'm going to skip several slides here, and we can always come back to them if there are questions, so just bear with me for one second as I do that. Here we go. So the comments that the state had on our preliminary draft, or excuse me, the draft, which again included the Planning Commission and City Council's contributions, first were to make a modification to an existing action item to specifically call out the developmental disabled and extremely low-income housing within that action item. They also wanted a new policy and program to identify funding for lower-income affordable housing. They also asked for us to be a little bit more specific about exactly where we would provide public handouts on fair housing. They wanted us, rather than just to say that we're going to provide it, but explain how we would do that. And we included that in Action HOU 8.2, which is part of the modifications in your packet. They also request us, requested that we identified specific ways outreach, outreach will be conducted on fair housing laws similar to the action above. And then finally, to provide a little bit more description about the existing conditions and the development potential for several sites that had the potential to be developed with over 20 units. And this is one of the specific tasks that we had as part of the overall housing element update, is to show that we had adequate sites to accommodate our regional housing needs, allocations, in particular with the very low and low-income housing. And in our initial listing of the sites, we were fairly conservative in terms of how many units could be built. But as we have begun to see, we're seeing that our zoning code is actually working quite well. It's not providing constraints towards achieving the maximum densities. So this is the additional language that was added in order to convey that to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. As you can imagine, they're very, they want to make sure that the sites that we identified actually work. So together, the draft housing element, plus the modifications included in your packet, were both reviewed by the state, and also provided in your packet is a copy of the state's preliminary approval, which reads, "The draft element with revisions meets the statutory requirements of state housing element law. It will comply with the state housing element law when the draft and revisions are adopted and submitted to the state in accordance with their submittal requirements." Overall, since January 25th, I provided you with an outline of what occurred since then. The action before the commission tonight is to recommend approval by the city council. The planning commission, staff is recommending in particular that the planning commission adopt a resolution that recommends the city council adopt the negative declaration and also the housing element. So that can be forwarded on for the council's consideration and in time by the state deadline of May 31st, which is just around the corner. As I mentioned previously, there was a negative declaration prepared for the project. An initial study was prepared and was determined that the housing element itself would not have a significant effect on the environment. The document was circulated for the required 30-day review between February 26th and March 27th. There were no written comments received. This is the recommendation, should the commission choose to make it, and both, and I'm available for any questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Me.
Okay.
Okay, so the first is really a comment about some of the tables. And so if you look at, and what I'd really like to see is that the tables are consistent, because they aren't. So if you look at page 49, and you look at San Carlos in 2010, the population is 28,406. Now, if you flip over to page 41, the population of San Carlos is 30,015, and it continues to be off throughout the years. So I'd like to see that those, that the source is identical. It's ABAG projections from 2013. So can we make those consistent?
I'm sorry, can you refer the second page number? I'm on 49.
You said it's 41 and 51.
49 and 51, okay.
We can definitely make those consistent. And if I had to guess, I would suspect one included the sphere of influence and one didn't, but I think their comment is they should be consistent, so we can do that.
Yes. And then, I see the exact same thing on page 11, and then on page 52, when it talks about jobs. Okay? So it talks about jobs, and those numbers are, again, very different.
But you see, I don't know if it speaks to that, but they're different numbers. I mean, one is sphere, includes sphere of influence, and the other one is just population.
So what, what population is considered under our sphere of influence? That would account for 2,000 people. So I'm looking at page 49, where it says our population, this is historical numbers alone. San Carlos in 2010, it said the population was 28,406. And on page 51, it says the population including city limits and sphere of influence.
I don't know, could it include, incorporated San Carlos? I'm getting a head nod, yes.
Well, I mean, as Mr. Abrams mentioned, the sources could be different. I mean, under the first, on page 49, the table in the top right-hand corner is from ABAG, and they're using specific census data tables, whereas I believe on page 51, this is ABAG projections, well, it is also ABAG projections 2013. But on page 49, it also is qualified by some additional information, so we can double-check the sources on that.
All I'm asking is to make them consistent.
Sure.
Okay? I mean, it only makes sense. And the same with the jobs tables on page 11 and 52. The other thing on page 89, you might want to, at the bottom of the sheltered homeless, that's not really a number. At the bottom of the sheltered homeless, that's not really a number. It's what the computer puts in when you do something that you're not supposed to do.
Yeah, it's a computer error. We can correct that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. So, there's two other items that I want to ask about, one of which is under noise in the initial study on page 47. And so, it talks about... Especially on page 50, where it talks about aircraft noise. And it says it doesn't have any effect on the noise levels, and I might agree with that and accept that helicopters are back training over the neighborhood. And, in fact, for the past five years, I've never seen a helicopter actually stay east of Industrial Road. And so, I don't know how you can make the statement that the noise from aircraft wouldn't have an impact, especially since you include east San Carlos Avenue as a piece of this.
I assume this environmental review is focused on the effects of this particular project?
It's not a particular project. It's the entire area where the potential units could be developed.
No, I thought that this... Approving the housing element as a project under SEQA. And so, they're trying to evaluate whether or not this project, being the housing element, is going to have an impact in the environment. And so, they've created... They've got a consultant who's done an environmental impact report that concludes that this project, being the housing element, is not going to have an effect on the environment.
And not the other way around. The environment wouldn't have an effect on any of the project's potential units.
I don't even understand. Maybe staff understands that question. I don't understand it.
Well, I will clarify that it is correct. I mean, the project is adoption of the housing element, and bearing in mind that with this housing element adoption, there hasn't been any new residential areas designated or proposed. We're largely carrying forward many of the land use and zoning regulations and sites that were adopted as part of the previous housing element that ran through the years, 2007 through 2014. And of course, when any projects are actually constructed, they would undergo their own SEQA review process.
Okay. So, let's cross that one out. And the other question I had, and it may not be relevant to this at all, but as part of the general plan, we talked about neighborhood hubs. Is that something that would be appropriate for this, or is that inappropriate somewhere else?
In terms of... Well, I guess it depends on your question, but we haven't made any alterations to neighborhood hubs. That's... You know, that all stays the same as it was adopted in the general plan and, you know, specified in the zoning ordinance.
And I just wondered if that was an additional opportunity to put additional housing above whatever the neighborhood hub was.
I think the neighborhood hub... I don't have the... Unfortunately, I don't have a copy of the general plan in front of me, but I believe the neighborhood hub is kind of functions like an overlay, so it doesn't replace, you know, if there's the underlying zoning designation of RS3, RS6. If the particular geographical characteristics lend themselves to establishing a neighborhood hub, one could move forward under that scenario, but it's not a one or the other, so it already has the residential built within it.
And so, you could still put residential on top of whatever you...
I don't... I don't know that I can answer if it's on top, but it's still part of the base zoning district, yeah.
Okay. That's it.
Does anyone else have any additional questions for staff?
I do not.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt a negative declaration for the City of San Carlos's 2015-2023 housing element and adopt the City of San Carlos housing element 2015-2023, and direct staff to send the housing element to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for certification.
Second. Okay, so, two things. One is, I realize I didn't ask for any public comment, and I didn't, because I only see two people in the audience, and both of them are connected to the item. But in the event I miss something, I... Is there anyone here who wanted to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, I also... Normally, I ask whether there's any Commission discussion before I entertain a motion, but we can still discuss it, even though the motion's been made and seconded. Does anyone have any discussion of this item?
Okay. Then I would call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. So, report on recent City Council actions.
I have none for the Commission this evening.
Okay. That's nice. Any Planning Commission comments or reports?
I have one. It's been a while since we've passed our zoning ordinance, and many, many houses have been built in the last few years. And I thought it would be a nice idea if at some point or at some agenda way down the road, that we have a conversation about whether that is actually achieving what we're hoping to achieve. And the reason I say that is, is that there's been... There's been a lot of grumbling that I've personally heard and that I know Shannon must have heard at the RDRC about overbuilding in San Carlos or about the types of buildings that we've had. And I think it might be appropriate either to educate the community on what our housing zoning actually is, or to maybe educate ourselves on whether our zoning ordinance is meeting what we thought it would meet.
So, are you... So, you're asking that staff agenda is like a whole study session or something on the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
And is this... You're talking about residential zoning, not... Well, I guess it's all technically mixed use... Not the mixed use stuff, but actually the actual houses and what's the design review of houses and that sort of thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, this can happen a while down the road. I'm not saying it's urgent, but I think it's been a couple of years.
When does your term end?
Right after that. Good question. Who knows? I'm kind of emeritus. I'm kidding. No, I don't know. I honestly don't know when my term ends. June?
Okay.
I think next June?
Next June.
Are you on the same track as Scott?
She's got two years.
Yeah, I've got two years.
No, she's a year behind me.
Okay.
Yeah, two years.
Well, you know, honestly, I would suggest that if we were going to do that, we wait, because Scott, I think, is termed out. Aren't you in June?
A year.
Oh, you have a year too? Okay. All right.
Two years, I have a year.
Well, do the folks want that? I mean, it just... I think everyone served on the RDRC other than me, so is it under the current zoning ordinance? So, is it to benefit us, or is it to benefit the community? Or what were your thoughts?
I would like it to benefit both. I guess, maybe I should be clear. I've noticed that since we've changed certain things in our zoning ordinance, that we have a overabundance of a particular housing style being built. Gigantic craftsman, to be specific.
Okay.
And I'm just curious if that's what we intended. And if it is, cool, but I just think it'd be interesting to take a look at it.
Staff, do you want to consider putting something on the agenda at some point?
Sure. That's certainly a reasonable request, and I don't at all mind doing it. I think it would be very interesting and educational to see, now that our zoning, since its adoption in 2011, we're starting to see an uptick in the request for applications and development activity. And what we could do is bring back a collection of projects, single-family homes, that have actually been built, and kind of take a look at them, get photos, you know, of the context, and kind of see how they fit in, and just see what's been built. And I think that's what Commissioner Harper-Petersen is requesting, is just let's take a look at that. And, you know, we know, you know, for those that have worked on RDRC, we know for the most part, you know, what our standards are, but we can certainly, as part of that conversation, list them and bring that back to the Commission. I can put that on a future agenda item.
Great. Thank you.
Can we also... I thought at some point a while ago, we actually asked for some information on TDMs, traffic demand managements, and I just wondered when we might get that information.
Yes, and I am working on that, so thank you for bringing that up, so that I can update you. It's good to bring that up, so you don't wonder what staff has done with your request. We have made contact with a staff person at CCGAG who monitors the TDM program and asks for some background information on the actual strategies, how they develop the point system. But from what I recall from the Planning Commission's discussion in their request, was really wanting to know how is it working? Kind of wanting to look at case studies where TDM has been a required part of project approval, and it was constructed and built and operating, and how is that working? So, in order to get that information, because it's my understanding that's what the Commission wants, more than how did we devise the point system? If it's the point system, let me know, and we can bring that back as well. But it was my understanding we wanted case studies. So, I'm working to get a contact over at MTC, so we can, you know, have a broader net to cast, because it really depends on what projects have been built and where and how they're functioning, and bring that back. So, if it's the point system, you want to add to that, let me know, but otherwise, I'm working on case studies.
I thought those were evaluated yearly.
Well, they are in our ordinance, but I think... Because I think the only one that we have, maybe 1,001, and Pampf just came online. Pampf is pretty recent, so we may not have a lot of data to collect within our own jurisdiction, so we kind of want to look broader to bring the best information we can to the group.
I've done some research on it as part of something else I'm doing, and not on TDM specifically, but on ridership behavior, on TODs. And I've looked at different cities and actually people's dissertations on the subject, so I have some quantitative data that... Is it appropriate for me to share with you, Lisa, or is it appropriate for to share to them? I want to make sure I don't break any Brown Act rules by sharing that information.
Yeah, you're welcome to send it to me, and I can send it.
But you can share it on a day when it's agendized.
Or you can share it with staff, who can then share it with all of us.
Any additional Planning Commission comments or reports? Correspondents?
None received this evening.
Planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
The next regularly scheduled Planning Commission hearing date is May 18th, and staff is working to bring back the Transit Center portion of the Transit Village to the Planning Commission that evening. I haven't received confirmation that that will occur, but it looks like it's positioning to go. And then, we also have an item, and it's actually a single-family home, which is being proposed on a steep lot and is requesting variances for reasons that will be shared with the Commission on the 18th. That's that 171 Coronado.
Is it a giant craftsman?
No, it's not a craftsman.
Okay.
It's not. And then, on June 1st, it's confirmed from Ann Mark?
Yeah, on June 1st, the Landmark Hotel Design Review will be presented to the Commission on June 1st. And that summarizes the updates I have for you this evening.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned at 8:41.